All right. Hi, everybody. Welcome to this afternoon's virtual town hall. My name is Katie Nelson and I am the Public Information Officer for the Mountain View Police Department. I also serve on the city's COVID-19 Strategic Communications Team. And we have quite a packed agenda today. So a couple of housekeeping items before we begin. If you have a question, you can either do so by asking it in the Q and A box in the lower right-hand corner of your screen. Or if you were on the phone, you can raise your hand and let us know that you'd like to ask a question when we get to that portion of the agenda this afternoon. Also, if you need translations at all, there is a Spanish translation option. Nora, would you like to talk about that real fast for us?
Si, buenas tardes. Bienvenidos a la audiencia de Town Hall. Yo soy Kathy Nielsen y trabajo en la Policía de Mountain View como la Oficina Oficial de Información Pública y también como el equipo de Comunicación Estratégica. Y el día de hoy estamos ofreciendo traducción en español. Y por favor aplasten en su pantalla abajo, les va a aparecer el idioma español para que presionen ahí y escuchen la traducción en español. Gracias.
Thank you, Nora. All right, so before we begin, just again, my name is Katie Nelson. I'm the Public Information Officer for the Mountain View Police Department. And the first person that we're going to be able to speak with today is Mayor Margaret Abicoga. Would you like to give a few words of introduction?
Great, thank you, Katie. And good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for participating in our public town hall meeting. Our first virtual town hall, some of you were part of that, was way back at the end of April. And after that, we immediately planned on doing another one in light of COVID-19 and the ever-changing situation with sheltering in place. As we are now beginning to open up more of the community and things are starting to move a little more quickly, we thought this was a good time for us to have this meeting, to share with you all what we know and take questions and comments from all of you. But we also know that along with the stress, fear, and strains of COVID-19, the horrific acts against George Floyd and others that have awakened our nation and forced us all to acknowledge the systemic racism present all over our society against people of color. Make it that much more important that we stay together as a community and listen to one another. It's understandable that we all have a mix of strong emotions that we've been experiencing with the additional challenges of having to be physically apart. Personally, I got involved in public service because I saw that there was a problem, a systemic problem rooted in everyday things, processes, and institutions against people of color. I was fortunate enough to have mentors, a high school teacher, civil rights activist, my first boss, who helped guide my path and encouraged me to be open to those difficult conversations and approach them with an open mind. And that is what I would like to be for our community now. A guide, a guide to discussions about difficult topics, a guide to listening to the perspectives of people of color, and a guide to how the city government, our Mountain View government, can make changes that ensure that we are all, we are a community for all. I wanted to mention that as a first step, I'm creating an ad hoc committee council subcommittee on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I've appointed Council Member Lucas Ramirez, Vice Mayor Ellen Camay, and myself to that subcommittee. Our first task will be to plan and put on a series of community conversations about issues such as policing, schools, mental health, our budget. And I think I'd like to add civics education, especially for our young people, to that mix. Then as council members, we will be a conduit, a connector, you can say, between the community voices and making sure that actions can be taken at the city policy level to make a real change in how our city provides services to our residents. We will also be involved in a strategic visioning process. Our city manager will be spearheading in the next year to make sure that our future actions are through the lens of race, equity, and inclusion. As a city, we've already made many great strides, such as making it a priority and a council goal to be inclusive and protect the most vulnerable amongst us. But you are all right, and we do hear you that we can do more. We will do more, and that starts today with our town hall conversation. A quick rundown of what we have planned is, as we had planned for this update before, back in April or May, we wanted to have an update on the state of our city under COVID. And I've asked our city manager, Kimber McCarthy, to give us a brief overview of where we are with the reopening. And then I'd like to ask our police chief, Max Bozell, to provide some remarks in light of the current issues around policing. And then we'll open it up to questions. I know Katie will be our moderator. So we'll take questions on any, any topics of interest to all of you. So again, thank you so much for participating and thank you to our department heads who are here. They're here to help answer any questions you have, so I appreciate everybody's time. And I'll turn it back to, I guess I'll turn it to our city manager, Kimber McCarthy.
Great, thank you so much, Mayor. Hi, everyone. I'm Kimber McCarthy. I'm the city manager here at the City of Mountain View. And I'm very excited to be joining you today. And I'm excited that you could join us in this conversation. And like the mayor said, joining me are the department head team. And so we are here to help answer any questions you may have about any of the programs that we have currently underway or any changes to our operations or the shelter-in-place order. And I wanted just to piggyback very briefly off of what the mayor said. And I speak really for the entire organization and the department head team in saying that we get into this line of work as staff because we really, truly want to make a difference in our community and really see the results of the positive programs and initiatives and, and things that we do on a daily basis and with our community and with our residents. And that is really what is rewarding in the line of work that we do. And so I just want to let the community know and let all of you know that myself and the department head team are really committed to these efforts and the efforts that the mayor spoke of. And we look forward to these next several months and the upcoming years as well and really thinking through the strategic plan for the city and the vision for the city and really helping build an even better community. So I just wanted to make sure that you all know that we are committed to this work. And that is really the reason why we do what we do is to serve our community. So I want to just make some very brief remarks, as the mayor said, on the shelter-in-place order and some of the projects and initiatives that are underway right now. And then we do have the ability for you to ask very specific questions about any of those projects that are underway of the specific department heads who can give you more details and more information. So the first thing that I'd like to say is that the shelter-in-place order is put out by the Santa Clara County Public Health Department. So the city does not have really any, any say-so on what is going to be in that order or how quickly we move through the phases of the order. So we follow the guidelines that our public health officer issues, Dr. Sarah Cody. And right now, the shelter-in-place order has changed as of June 5th. And so just some of the highlights of what is now allowed under the order, which is considered to be Phase Two of the California moving through the phases. But right now, outdoor dining is allowed, as well as in-store retail shopping. Also, house cleaning, other low-contact or no-contact home services are allowed. Pet grooming and dog walking, for those of you who've been wanting to get your dog's haircut, you can do that now. Also, all childcare and summer camps are available to be open now. So those programs are only allowed up to 12 children. And a change of group is allowed for those camps every three weeks. Also, outdoor ceremonies and religious gatherings are allowed under the current order, up to 25 people. And we also are allowed to reopen our swimming pools. You can also go camping, so we'll have more information about that a little bit later. We also have our dog parks open, so our fenced dog parks are open at Shoreline and Ringsdorf. And it is still required for you to wear masks and continue to practice social distancing. We've also opened our tennis courts and we would just ask that individuals comply with the signage that's up and, and make sure that you're just playing tennis with up to only one other household. In terms of our city pools, the pools will be opening soon. And right now, we are cleaning the pools and training our lifeguards and just really making sure that they are safe and secure for all of you to enjoy. And our Community Services Director, John Marchand, can talk about that in a little bit. Our summer camps are also now open for four-week time periods. They run now through July 2nd. And you can go to our website to learn more or to register, and that's at mountainview.gov/register. We're also going to be starting our library grab-and-go program later on this month, where you can register for your books and be able to pick them up going through our drive-through library service. And our library director, Tracy Gray, is also here to talk more about that. Then there's a couple other updates that we've had a lot of questions about that I just want to briefly touch on. And the first one is the closure of Castro Street. And just this past Tuesday, city council voted to approve the closure of Castro Street this summer. And that is expected to be in the 100 to 400 blocks of Castro Street. And right now, we are targeting the start date of June 22nd for that to occur. And that, right now, is intended to last all summer through September. And so that is planned to be temporary right now, and we are still working through those logistical details. But we are looking forward to having that up and running within the next couple of weeks. Lastly, I wanted to provide an update on testing in Mountain View. And some of you may have participated in the pop-up testing that occurred at our community center, at our aquatic, our aquatic center pool parking lot. So on Memorial Day, May 25th, we were able to test almost 500 people. And then two days later, on May 27th, we tested about 450 people. So all told, it was about 940, 950 people that were tested. And I'm very happy to say that we will soon be starting a testing that will be here every day in a partnership with the County of Santa Clara through their partner, Planned Parenthood, starting June 15th at Shoreline Athletic Fields Parking Lot at Garcia Avenue. We will be open Monday through Thursday from 9:00 to noon, and then also from 1:00 to 4:00. And the first week of testing is planned to be June 15th through the 18th. And that first week is intended to be testing for first responders and other healthcare providers, and also to other essential or frontline workers. So for example, for those of you who may be volunteering at food banks or grocery store workers or in-home support service workers, all of those employment sectors are intended to be open for testing that first week. And then starting the week of Monday, June 22nd, the site will be open to public testing for everyone. And so the way it's going to work is that you would just bring a photo ID. And if you have it, health insurance information, if you don't have it, that's okay. You can still be tested. And you can get tested. You don't have to make an appointment, and it will be first come, first served. So we're very happy that we'll be able to provide that service in conjunction with the county for our residents in Mountain View and also for those residents who live throughout the North County. And then I just really briefly, before I close, I want to give an update on a couple of the city's COVID relief efforts. So many of you may know, and some of you may have also donated to our Together MV donation portal. And right now, we have received over $141,000 of donations towards our rent relief and our small business relief efforts. And right now, for the rent relief program, it is currently administered through the Community Services Agency. And they've received a little over 2,000 inquiries. And they have either contacted or attempted to contact all of those inquiries. Right now, they are currently in process with about 500 applications, and they've already served around 650 households. So of the remaining amount of people, there have been quite a few where there have been no callbacks or they've been unresponsive to CSA reaching out. Either the phone isn't working or they just haven't received a call back yet. And there's also been a very few or small number where the people do not actually qualify for the City of Mountain View program. Either they are out of the income bracket or they might not be Mountain View residents. But all of those people have been referred to other agencies. And we're also looking at helping them through other CSA programs. So we're very glad to be able to, to partner with CSA on that effort. And then also, in terms of our small business relief program, we have been working through all those applications. And so far, we have 26 businesses that have either received funding or are in process to receive funding this week. And we have about 70 businesses that are working on their loan applications right now and should be getting that funding through, through the city and through our partners very soon, hopefully within the next couple of weeks. So I'll just end by saying that the city has been working really hard to partner with not only the county, but a lot of our community-based organizations. And we are really striving to serve and help all members of our community and all segments of the community that need help. And I am very appreciative of everyone who's donated to the Together MV portal. And I really think that it shows just the kind of neighbors that we have and the kind of community that we are, that, that everyone has really been stepping up to help each other. And so I will end there with that brief update, and I will turn it over to our police chief, Max Bozell, right now.
Thank you, City Manager McCarthy and Mayor Abicoga for your opening remarks. I'll just start by echoing the mayor's sentiments and also reinforcing the Mountain View Police Department's commitment and the fact that we stand with the city and the community at this pivotal time to take action to solve systemic racism in our society. I am committed, the men and women who serve you are committed, and will continue to work collaboratively to identify how we can reinvest to be leaders in inclusion and equity, providing our community with public safety service that meets the needs of everyone, provides equal justice under law, and closes the gap on racial and economic barriers. Introspection, continuous improvement, and a commitment to high standards has been a hallmark in Mountain View. And your police department is listening. We are open to dialogue. We're dedicated to meeting this challenge with you. We've been getting a lot of questions around our operations and how things are done here in the department. And I think two areas that I would just like to highlight right now. One is to talk a little bit about the people that serve you and the policies by which that they operate and are held accountable. So our officers and professional staff come from all walks of life. And the hiring process by which they're selected is very rigorous. We do a 10-year background. We have psychological exams, lie detector tests. And we look at a number of conditions and, and character and morale or, or moral character and honesty in communication and other attributes that we evaluate in order for someone to qualify for the position of peace officer. Once they're selected, they go through rigorous training, both at the police academy. If they do not have two years of education by the time they're hired, they will after they graduate from the academy with prior college. And most of our staff have some level of college education, either an undergrad, graduate degree, summer doctoral candidates, and we even have an officer with a law degree. From there, we do a very extensive field training program. And we have an 18-month probationary period in which our personnel are continuously evaluated through that time period. In the sense of our organizational discipline, we really put an emphasis on training, our policies, the laws that we're obligated to follow, and take proactive steps to ensure our staff receive continuous professional training, at least 60 hours minimum a year. And through that, the focus are on a variety of topics interwoven, interwoven with those areas of concern that you hear about, such as de-escalation, fair and impartial policing, or implicit bias awareness, as well as crisis intervention. A number of the questions have been raised around an eight-can't-wait doctrine in which last week I was made aware of, and we started evaluating those based on the information we were receiving. And the concern about the carotid hold. And after a lot of discussion, we removed the carotid hold from our policy. And we continue to evaluate how we might best, although we think in spirit, we need those points, how we might best and better accomplish what the eight-can't-wait initiative is promoting. So with that, I think you're going to see us modifying some of our wording, specifically reinforcing what we already have in other policies and in our training around de-escalation. It's really a part of our culture in how we do policing. And I think that's reflected based on our use-of-force statistics. Again, you know, less than 30 last year out of roughly 36,000 calls. Our organizational discipline is also focused on accountability. The two officers, last two officers that I separated from the organization resulted from an internal complaints, not external complaints. So we do take this very seriously, that our staff model and abide by the values and the mission and the requirements that the job demands. We do have an internal affairs process. And while it is operated from within the police department, we do coordinate and work with members from the city outside the police department to ensure that there is some oversight with regard to our compliance and our standards, including an audit that the city attorney's office conducts annually with respect to our internal affairs complaints. I know there's questions about civilian oversight, and it's not a topic that I've ever not wanted to engage in. We're certainly open to that as an option. It's just never a topic that has been really brought up or the community has engaged us with. So, you know, I think it's important that the challenging and difficult job of enforcing laws does require the utmost attention to ensuring that we have the highest standards. And we are very open to ensuring that we make the necessary changes to secure the trust and support of our community. That is part of our mission, and that is what we endeavor to do. Thank you.
Chief Bozell, thank you so much for that presentation. We're actually, before we move forward, one quick note. We're going to take a couple of questions for the police department before we move forward to the rest of the people here on this very important panel. We have department heads from across the city who are going to be providing updates with regards to pools, libraries, recreation, things like that. So again, a packed agenda. But we did have a couple of questions come in that really speak to the educational portion of what it is the police department does here in Mountain View. And so one of the first questions that came in was how are policies formed at the police department? And how are they updated? Can you expand on that a little bit for us, chief?
Sure. So in our policy manual, we have, you know, an array of policies that, that handle everything from the structure of the department to how personnel are selected and appointed to certain positions, to of course, operations, use of force being obviously the most, one of interest at the moment. So we do contract with a company called Lexipol, which does a lot of law enforcement, some fire department corrections, policy manuals that provide us with changes that occur in law and best practices that we then consider. And we have an internal review process by which a chain of command reviews and also subject matter experts review the policies to determine how those fit within Mountain View. So some agencies may apply a philosophy differently than our community. So we evaluate what the recommended changes are based on our values internally and the expectations that we have here. In some cases, we, we do get input and involve the community. We don't have a process where we formally do in every case. But for example, in our immigration and civil law enforcement approach, there was extensive work as community members reached out with an interest to discuss the policy itself. And we made, made changes and incorporated their ideas as it was important for us to ensure that we had those reflected in how we go about doing our work. The other one is, was the unmanned aerial system, or better known as the drone. And that was a process with public input at council in which an overarching citywide policy was crafted. And then the internal department policy was based and modeled after that. So that's a general overview that describes how, how we go about our policy development.
Awesome. Thank you so much. As people have been looking a little bit more into what impacts Mountain View on a crime level, one question that came in was with regards to DUIs and public intoxication. And they noticed that while there was a meaningful decrease over the last five years, how else can we help kind of handle those situations going forward? And what programs are in place right now that maybe help with that?
So probably the first and foremost is self-responsibility and understanding that driving while under the influence is a dangerous act. So, you know, we can all start by personally committing to ensuring we either use a ride share or a designated driver. And that's probably the best. And also, you know, encourage those that you're out with and that you are potentially having alcoholic beverages with to drink responsibly. So we do a number of campaigns throughout the year, specifically around the holidays, both in this, this early summer and the Christmas holiday and December holidays for ensuring that there's public education around the increased risk during that time for driving under the influence. We have worked in the past with our businesses for just providing outreach and awareness around alcoholic influence-related issues. And within the justice system itself, there's rather extensive efforts for education as well as consequences around driving under the influence.
Great, thank you. We have seen, chief, several questions about the budget. Can you talk a little bit about the police budget, what it encompasses, and what that goes towards in terms of how we give back to the community?
Sure. So with the personnel costs, especially in the valley here, roughly 90%, you know, don't quote me exactly, but roughly around that high 80s perhaps are associated to our, our personnel costs. And, and the remainder are supplies and services, everything from software support agreements to pens and pencils. So, you know, within our, our personnel services, which is really the, the backbone of what we provide here in the department, we have roughly four divisions or areas of responsibility, the office of the chief. And we have support services, which encompasses our records, our 911 communication center, our public safety systems. We have what's called our Special Operations Division, which is not a military term. I think there was some confusion about the special operations vehicles. Those are detective cars. And within special operations is what we comprise our investigations sections or crimes against persons. persons, crime suppression around burglary. And also, our neighborhood and event services, our special events planning for the Shoreline Amphitheater, which hopefully comes back soon, downtown events, those are all coordinated through what we call special operations. And then the largest division is our field operations division, and that is our patrol, community policing patrol, staffing, youth services, our traffic, safety and enforcement folks who go out and do education or enforcement around traffic safety. And we also have a myriad of part-time employees who provide support for parking enforcement, as an example, downtown and throughout the city, as well as other professional staff internally that do everything from assist us with paying bills to crime analysis, to show crime trends, and provide information on how our resources may be best deployed.
Thanks, chief. We have a question here from Mike. He wants to know about providing some clarity on the timeline for evaluating and adopting some of the eight can't wait recommendations. He says he believes that so far we have adopted two, and when can we expect to see others perhaps put in place?
So, good question. I think the eight can't wait website may show that we have two, but if you go to our website and do a comparison, some of those, I think, certainly in spirit comply. We're looking right now at the de-escalation portion of that and incorporating language that we're having our subject matter experts review. So that's likely going to be within the next couple of weeks. And some of the areas that we'll have to really discuss, you know, the use, what's called the force continuum in our profession is looked at, it was actually criticized back when it was in our policies, because it looked as if with the continuum, there's only one way you could go, which was up. And so that was removed, and the standard of the minimal amount of force reasonably necessary was reinforced. So we'll have to evaluate that. The other area of evaluation is shooting at moving vehicles. And while we prohibit it for a vehicle that, for example, may be just driving away, there is provisions within our policy that allows us, if the vehicle is a deadly threat, or people in the vehicle are shooting from the vehicles, an example, or creating a deadly threat, we would be able to react to that as well. And the deliberation or the debate would be, for example, situations in which a vehicle's being used to ram people. And do we have a mechanism by which we can prevent that? And I want to make sure we carefully think that through before we just ban that ability and those, hopefully never, but circumstances that have happened from time to time elsewhere, certainly in the state. So look for some changes, I think, in the next couple of weeks, and then probably even more a little bit after that.
Thanks, chief. All right, one last question, guys, before we move on, and we'll certainly come back to as many as we can. This is from Leslie, and she wants to know, what does having police in schools achieve?
So since the seventies, we've had school resource officers in our local schools, and probably the most important aspect of that are relationships. So if, and police officers are not involved in the disciplinary process, there's a memorandum of understanding, there's a clear distinction between the school's responsibilities and our responsibilities. So depending what level school, elementary, middle, or high school, there's varying needs that the schools use us for, everything, you know, potentially from interacting with students and providing information about whatever topics they may have around bullying or cyber issues, drugs is an example. If there are situations on campus that require police to respond, instead of the school calling us and having a patrol officer come out who doesn't have a relationship necessarily with the staff at the school, we have staff assigned, so I don't even think they call the police department, they just call the officer directly. If there are more serious situations that occur on campus, then we're, our staff being assigned to those areas are typically in close proximity and can respond very quickly. And it's also an opportunity for us to get to know the kids in our community. So we see it as an advantageous program. It's not enforcement-centric, it's collaborative and intended to build relationships. And from there, we even know who some of the kids are who may come from disadvantaged homes, may be, you know, English as a second language. Our SRO, School Resource Officer Staff, is very diverse. We have an African-American, Asian-American, Hispanic officer, and so hopefully they can relate to a wide variety of students in schools. And as we identify kids in need, we have programs in addition to what the schools may provide, such as some summer camp activities for at-risk youth, holiday gift programs, a shop with the cops to get kids that may not have means, supplies, and very, it's very effective at building positive, long-lasting relationships, especially in a non-adversarial, non-enforcement setting, which most of the time is the case.
Thank you so much, chief. Again, we will come back to questions as we are able, but we would like to continue on with the rest of our agenda for this afternoon. So the first person that we're going to be speaking with.
I'm sorry, can I just say something really?
Oh, of course.
Sorry, I know we're going to have someone else speak, but I just wanted to let everyone know that this is going to be a continued conversation that we are going to have with the community in the weeks and months to come. And so I want to let everyone know that I see, we see the questions on the screen that are coming up, and there are a lot of questions about having the dialogue and listening to the community, and I want to let you know that that is absolutely our intention. And we are just getting started on this. This town hall was scheduled a while ago before, you know, the horrible situation with the murder of George Floyd even happened. And so what we're doing right now is framing our next steps. And the start of that was forming the City Council Subcommittee on Race Equity and Inclusion, and really helping think through what we're going to be working on and doing in the next few weeks. And as Chief Bozell said, some of the steps that we're going to take will happen in very quick order, in terms of the looking at the eight can't wait. And we know that there's going to be a lot more listening, a lot more reaching out. We want to have two-way dialogue with the community. And I know that this town hall isn't necessarily the best format, and certainly not Zoom, to have those conversations, but I just want to let everyone know that that is our intention, and we are committed to looking at what policing might look like in the future in Mountain View, and what other innovative programs or ways we can do things, that that is certainly something we are open to. I think one of the themes that you're hearing is that we do believe that we have been a leader in community policing, and that community policing model, and part of being a leader is knowing that there are continuous improvement opportunities. And so I just want to make sure that everyone knows that this is something that we take seriously, that we are going to listen to the community. There will be opportunities for feedback and listening and dialogue, and I would just say, this is what we're formulating now, and we're working on our plan now, and really trying to be thoughtful about how we are hearing feedback and what we do. So before we move on, I just thought it was important to say that, to let everyone know that this is something that is a high priority for us, and we will be working on that in the weeks and months to come.
Thanks, Kimbra. All right. So the next portion of our agenda, we'll be discussing with some of the department heads, a few minutes of highlighted topics that we've seen come down as a result of changes that have been made because of COVID. So the first person who's going to be talking with us is Dawn with regards to the Castro Street closure. So Dawn, if you could tell us a little bit more about what that is going to look like and what that entails, that would be great.
Thank you, Katie. I'm Dawn Cameron, Public Works Director. So as mentioned by the city manager, the county has determined that outdoor dining at restaurants will once more be allowed. And to provide an outdoor dining experience and reenliven our downtown, the city council has approved closing four blocks of Castro Street from Evan Avenue to Mercy Street. We will be leaving the cross streets of California, Dana, and Villa open to avoid traffic disruptions for the adjacent neighborhoods. There will be tables set out on the street for people to enjoy a meal from one of the many restaurants along Castro, as well as adjacent streets. There will also be handwashing stations and artistic features, such as space for local chalk art. To facilitate takeout businesses, additional short-term parking would be provided in the city-owned parking garages and parking lots at the back of the businesses. We will have signs posted reminding the public of the county public health order rules of no more than six people per table, and everyone at a table must be from the same household. I want to acknowledge that this is a real collaborative initiative, and we appreciate our partners who are helping make this happen. The Downtown Business Association is taking the lead in working with local businesses on a coordinated approach to cleaning and servicing the tables in order to ensure that the area is safe and healthy for patrons. VTA is rerouting their buses and moving bus stops. The Mountain View Wisman School District is providing picnic tables while school is out of session. We're also grateful to the Shoreline Amphitheater Live Nation for generously providing picnic tables, barricades, and bollards to help us during, do the street closure in a manner that is safe and aesthetically pleasing. We are striving to close off the block starting on Monday, June 22nd. We may need a day or two after we close off the blocks to set up the tables, signage, pavement markings, provide for good pedestrian thoroughfares with pavement markings and so on, as well as the hand stations, hand washing stations. So we ask that you please stay tuned for an announcement of the formal grand opening date, which we will put out there as soon as we know everything is in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn, very much. The next person on the agenda is Tracy Gray with our library services. Tracy, would you like to tell us a little bit more about the grab-and-go option that's coming up? Oh, Tracy, you're muted. You're still muted.
Hi, everyone. We are very excited to start our grab-and-go service next Tuesday, June 16th. It will be a walk-up service. The hours will be from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM, Tuesdays through Saturdays. So customers currently can place items on hold like they regularly do, up to fifteen items can be put on hold at a time. Our staff has been very busy in the last few weeks. Just this week, we have pulled approximately fifteen hundred items on hold for people who have been placing holds in the last two weeks. So when you receive your hold notification, however you regularly receive it, whether it's email, text, or a phone notification, just like when we were during regular operations, when you get that notification pinged on your phone that says your holds are ready for pickup, you can come to the library during those days and times, Tuesday through Saturday, two to six. Make sure you bring your library card. We will have tables set up outside the main doors of the library on Franklin Street. It will be a walk-up service, so if you live close by, if you're biking, if you drive, you can park in our service lot. Our line will start at the entrance of the walkway by the Franklin Street parking lot. We will have signs, we will have staff directing everybody. We ask that everybody who comes does wear a mask and stays six feet apart from each other. The nice thing is that our big pillars out in the front of the library are exactly six feet apart, so that will be very helpful. So when you get up to the first window, you'll show your library card, give your name. Our staff will have walkie-talkies, they will call the staff inside the library, grab your holds, check them out for you, bring them outside, place them on a table in a paper bag, and you can grab your items and go and enjoy. The library materials can be returned 24/7. We have a book slot in the front entrance, so you can return items at any time. You can return them during those hours when you come and pick up your holds, you can return as well. All of our materials will be quarantined for seventy-two hours, and then they will be reshelved and ready to be placed on hold for other customers. So your library materials might still show on your account a couple days after you return them. I want to also emphasize that we are continuing to increase digital ebooks and our digital content. In the last three months, our usage of e-materials, ebooks, and audiobooks has increased about eight hundred percent compared to last year. So we're very happy that you all are finding our services, streaming videos, streaming magazines, downloading ebooks. We're continuing our virtual programs, so please check our website for all of the virtual programs. For example, we have ESL, English of the Second Language, Language Swap, Storytimes, Friday Nights for Teens. This week, we had an author event with an author, and I wanted to say our ESL programs, we've had so many join, we've had to add a couple extra sessions. We've had people from all over the world actually come and join for our ESL and language swaps, so it's been very exciting. And just remember, our digital library is open 24/7, even though our building is currently closed, so we look forward to seeing you all next week.
Tracy, thank you so much. Last but not least, John is here to talk a little bit more about parks and other things that are going to be reopening in the coming weeks. John, you're on.
Thanks, Katie, and thanks, Kimbra, our city manager, for her opening remarks. She touched on a number of things that I was going to, so you are correct, we were able to open the dog park at Shoreline, as well as the fenced-in off-leash area at Rangestor Park this week, and we have some additional signage up, so please take note of that. Within the Recreation Division, we were able to open some summer camps on a limited basis this week, and those have been going really well so far. We will be expanding our summer program starting after June 2nd, and so we would like you to continue to look at our website, and you can go to mountainview.gov/register, and we will have new programming up on that website by June 22nd, so please take a look and register for our new programs. With the recent update, the county order does allow pools to be open, and I know that there's some questions that have been posted about that, and we are happy to announce that we will be opening June 20th for lap swim. At the moment, due to social distancing protocols, lap swim will be the only activity that we're going to be providing at the moment, and we will be instituting a reservation system, because only one lap swimmer is allowed in each lane at a time, and so to ensure that everyone has equal time and access, there will be a reservation system created. You can go to our website, mountainview.gov/Aquatics, and more information will be posted early next week about that lap swim program. As well as the operator of the Questa Tennis Center will begin operations this coming Monday, June 15th, and that will include court reservations, summer camps, and instruction will be returning, and more information is available at mountainviewtennis.net. And finally, several changes have been made to Shoreline Regional Park. As many of you know, the golf course is open and in great shape, so please join us. And we've recently opened the driving range as well, so you can come out and practice. And in addition, we opened Michael's Restaurant, we opened the to-go window for orders, and the patio is also available to come and sit down for outdoors seating. And finally, at the Sailing Lake, they are in operation, providing summer camps and private instruction. Their cafe is not quite open, they should be open in the next two weeks or so. They should be open in the next two weeks or so, providing a great food that you are used to at that location. And I'll just, I'll finish by saying, because I did see a question come up. If you're looking for financial assistance for recreation programs, we do have a financial assistance program, and you can go to our Recreation Division website and find more information about that. Thank you.
John, thank you so much. And with that, that concludes the review portion of our agenda, and now we're going to be opening it up to Q and A. We had several questions submitted ahead of time, so we're going to do again our best to get through as many as possible. So with that being said, the first question that we had comes from Kathleen, and I think this is probably going to be for Dawn. She said parking to shop downtown was hard before the pandemic started, and it probably will intensify now with closing Castro Street and losing those parking spots down there. How will you make parking available and easier? Will you provide unlimited free parking in all lots and on the streets? What are you doing to help the businesses that are on adjacent streets and within the downtown area?
Thank you, Katie. So in terms of what we may see in terms of parking demand, right now, of course, what we're seeing is our parking lots and the parking structures are virtually empty. We are looking forward to people coming back downtown, which means it is going to put more demand on parking. But we do also anticipate that's actually going to be a fairly slow ramp up. Some of the parking also went towards businesses who may still have employees working from home and other situations. So what we're going to do is monitor the parking usage and start to see if there are any parking crunches. And if so, look at what we can do to change our policies related to opening, you know, time limits on parking. If that needs to be adjusted, we'll adjust those. But right now, I believe most parking is allowed for two or three hours at a time, which allows time to come in, have a nice meal, and wander a little bit and leave. The other thing we are looking into is there may be an opportunity for us to enter into partnerships with some of the private businesses that have their own lots here in downtown, where they may allow some additional public parking. So we're going to monitor the situation and do what we can to keep parking available for people coming to visit downtown. As for the side streets, again, they're remaining open. The parking that is there is remaining open. If they need some short-term parking restrictions to help with just picking up, you know, just making sure there's space in front of their restaurant so that people can drop by and pick up food quickly and go, we'll work with them to make those arrangements.
Perfect. Thank you, Dawn. The next question comes from Bruce England. He said not all advisory bodies are meeting yet, so for example, like BPAC. Why is this? And can you describe if there is a plan for a COVID-19 task force? Start with Kimbra, perhaps answering that one. Oh, you're still muted.
Oh, sorry. Can you repeat Bruce's question again?
Absolutely. Bruce asked, "Not all advisory bodies are meeting yet, for example, BPAC. Why is this?" And then his follow-up was, "Can you describe what is planned for a COVID-19 task force?" He had only heard about it, but did not know any of the particulars or details about opportunities for the public to participate.
Okay, great. So Dawn, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the BPAC, which stands for the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, they will be meeting on June 24, I believe. Is that correct, Dawn?
That is correct.
Okay. So that is planned, and that committee will be meeting, and that agenda will be posted. As far as a COVID task force, right now, there is the Mountain View Resiliency Task Force that is underway that is made up of about 30 people throughout the Mountain View community that come from both the nonprofit, the government, corporations, hospital, Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Association, just a number of different sectors of the community who have met to discuss what reopening might look like for those different sectors in Mountain View and are discussing how we can work together collectively and share information so that those people can then take that information back to their own constituents or their own stakeholders and members of the groups that they belong. So we're trying to make sure that the information isn't just coming from the city, but that we're sharing information with each other and then collectively sharing that information with the groups that we represent and the people that interact together most frequently in Mountain View. So that effort just started this month, actually, I believe, a week and a half or a couple weeks ago. And we do intend to post information about that on our website, so we are working on that right now.
Thank you, Kimbra. All right, this next question is from Margaret. Margaret, Dana Pede, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that, says, "What concrete measures are being taken by the mayor to allow for community input in conversations surrounding race, equity, and policing?"
Thank you. So I'm seeing some of the questions, and I think I should elaborate more on what the subcommittee concept is. You know, we've been trying to respond as quickly as possible as city government. And so, you know, I've been thinking through this long and hard quite a bit. And so the thought was that by doing a subcommittee of the council, number one, we can elevate the topic to that level. And as council members, you know, I just, I treat my job very seriously. I was elected by our residents. I'm very honored to have that, you know, that just, that responsibility, frankly. And I come from the community. You know, I'm a mom. I have two kids. And at the high schools, I recognize a lot of the names on the attendee box from today and on Tuesday, because quite a few of them are classmates of my children. So, you know, I am from the community, and that's very important to me. I put that as my highest priority. So as a council, we all do represent the city, number one. But number two, the subcommittee is really just a vehicle to try to get out to the community, do the outreach in an organized way. You know, my hope is with the subcommittee is really to gain input, to gain involvement, participation from as many folks as possible. And, you know, I'd like for us to work across different sectors. I did, I saw one of our elementary school trustees mentioned Superintendent Rudolph is planning to have a forum, and I actually had a conversation with him the other day about how we could work together on this effort. And so, you know, that is my hope with this. It's not about just us council members and, you know, us making decisions. It's really more about being outward and trying to create those places where we can have real dialogue and conversation. So I welcome that. You know, this is just a starting point, as the city manager mentioned. We want to, you know, have more involvement. We want to work collectively together. I, you know, folks who would like to help, I'm, you know, more than happy to, you know, to take volunteers. All of our subcommittees by Brown Act are public. So it's really, it was just an attempt to find a starting point for this. What I envision, a longer term, you know, discussion over many different topics, many different forums, and trying to be as inclusive as possible. And, you know, someone asked, "Well, why isn't there representation from the Black community?" And I very much acknowledge that. We're just working with what we have right now, to be honest. But that's not saying that this is it. As I mentioned, you know, I really want to do every, to include as many folks as possible. So again, those of you who would like to help out, very much welcome that. And so I hope that we will get folks interested and engaged. Hope that answers the question. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Very much appreciate that. This is a question for Chief O'Sell. It is from Trini, and she asked, she said, "Chief O'Sell said MVPD hadn't discharged a firearm in 19 years. So why does the budget call for 30 new rifles? Rather than defer funding, why not remove it from the budget altogether? Please do not bring more weapons into our city." Chief, can you clarify that a little bit?
Sure. So about 20 years ago, we acquired these AR-15 rifles really in response to what we were seeing across the country with active shooters and criminals being armed with higher-power weapons. And we replaced our shotguns. We converted our shotguns to what's called less lethal. They have beanbag rounds in them. And we deployed the rifles to officers. Initially, just a few for designated, what we call designated rifle officers, and then we deployed them all in our entire patrol force. So these 30 do two things. One, it does slightly increase our inventory so that we can issue them to all our officers. All officers are fitted for the guns themselves so that when they're used, they're sighted in properly. And it also replaces some of our older rifles. So that's the intent of why we have that particular weapon.
Thank you so much. This next question is from Juliette, and she wanted to know, "How does council plan to improve the ability for citizens to engage and be heard in the civic process during COVID-19? It has felt like Zoom is a way of hiding from the public consistently over the past two weeks. Either city manager or mayor, would you like to address that question?"
Sure, I can start, and then Mayor, if you want to jump in. I would say, Juliette, I agree that Zoom is not the greatest format. I think we can all agree that we would rather be in person, and we would rather be conducting these council meetings in our chambers and being able to hold events with people in person. And I think, you know, just candidly, that is a challenge because over the last three months, we've had to do everything through Zoom. And I think that's probably like a lot of you who are working from home, who are taking all of your meetings through Zoom. So I would say that, you know, from that aspect, it's a challenge. But just to reiterate what the mayor said and to kind of flow from what I said earlier, these communications and this dialogue and listening that we plan on having will depend on what is happening with the shelter in place. And to the extent that things change and we can have these conversations in person, obviously, that's the most ideal thing. But, you know, right now, we're in a Zoom environment, and we're in a virtual environment. And so we're doing the best that we can with that. And I think that we're really going to be planning, like the mayor said, planning a lot of different events over the next few weeks and months. And we're just getting started with thinking through that. And Juliette, I also answered one of your questions in the chat to the side, so I don't know if you'd had a chance to see that yet. But I'll end there and just say that this is something that we're trying to work through. And right now, it is the environment we're in, but we're doing the best that we can in this virtual environment. And I'll go ahead and stop so the mayor can provide some remarks, too.
Thank you. I think the city manager shared, you know, the challenges that we are having. You know, I'll be honest, I was really looking forward to being mayor and with, you get to really get out to the community. You know, we have a lot of community events. I was looking forward to like things like the Spring Parade, and with COVID, all of that was canceled. And so it has been very challenging. It has been frustrating. You know, I really miss meeting folks out in the community. That's what makes this job really interesting and worthwhile. And so this has certainly, you know, dampened that. And in many ways, yes, I feel like, you know, my opportunity as mayor is being cut short. But, you know, we do what we have to do in our current environment. And so, you know, doing these virtual town halls was one way of trying to reach out to the community more. You know, I used to do the meetups with Mac at, you know, the coffee shop, and I miss doing that. Trying to, you know, I've been trying to figure out, how can we continue to engage with the community in light of sheltering in place? But, you know, yes, I think we're trying to do as much of that as we can. I hope that reopening, that'll help create more opportunities. And, you know, when we first had sheltering in place, we really had to pivot our operations as a city, you know, how we conduct business. And now, as we're getting more used to it and figuring things out, I think we now have the space to figure out how even more we can be outward. So I look forward to those, you know, strategies and to opportunities to get out more, to meet with folks. So hopefully, we can get that going soon.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions for you, John, and I'm gonna lump them together for you. The first question is, "How will we be notified when the Shoreline Bistro reopens?" And the second one is, "Is there a possibility to add Fun Agility equipment for our dogs at the Shoreline Dog Park?"
I'll start with the second one first. How's that? The agility portion for the additions to a dog park, we have not necessarily considered that in the past, and that could be something we can look at into the future. I have seen models in other areas, so certainly we can take a look at that. For the Sailing Lake, you can go directly to their website and stay connected with them. You can also go to our Shoreline Regional Park Facebook page. We will put updates on that. And you can also like the Sailing Lake themselves on their Facebook to get that information.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. We had a question here from Eva, and I noticed that Audrey said she wanted to chime in and answer, but Eva Tang asked, and Audrey, please feel free to respond, about how we are taking care of our vulnerable populations, our essential workers, those who live in RVs, and homeless people.
Thank you, Katie, and thank you for the question. Eva, the city began four years ago looking at the growing number of residents that were unstably housed. And since that time, have undertaken a variety of different strategies and made a number of investments to help with the path to more stable housing. And this is kind of above and beyond the city's, you know, multimillion dollars of investment in the development of affordable housing itself. These are more, you know, programmatic efforts for people who are in need of assistance right now. And that includes the safe parking programs that many people do know about. We have two city-controlled lots and a third soon to open, as well as two faith-based lots and ongoing efforts to increase the number of sites that can provide safe parking locations. We also work very closely with the community-based organization that operates that program, as well as with the county, and not just around safe parking, because we recognize that's not a long-term solution for people. But we invest in case management and outreach and permanent supportive housing and rapid rehousing and rent relief programs to try to prevent people from becoming homeless or to try to get them back into housing as quickly as possible. We recognize sometimes that requires a lot of services that support people to be able to sustain housing. And so we work really closely with the county, which really is the provider of safety net services and the way that services are kind of jurisdictions are set up to address community needs. So that partnership is really critical. All told, it's been about $2 million worth of city funding over these past four years in these different kinds of programs. And that was kind of before COVID-19. And so over the past several months, there's been hundreds of thousands of dollars of additional funding that have been provided to provide for hygiene services. That includes both an increase in the shower services, as well as hand washing and restroom facilities, food program support, and support for mobile medical services, and a variety of other kinds of outreach efforts.
Fantastic. Thank you, Audrey. I'm seeing a theme in a lot of the questions that were submitted prior to our call this afternoon with regards to rent relief going forward if this pandemic will most likely inevitably continue. And the theme was around rent relief and ensuring that there is dialogue and communication between landlords and renters. Specifically, they want to know how the city will continue to potentially help and what that looks like. So, Kimbra, if that... So, Kimbra, if that would be something that you would like to start off with, that would be fantastic.
Sure, I'll take that. And then I'd ask our Assistant City Manager and Community Development Director, RT Shabastava, to help if I'm missing anything. So we are engaging in active dialogue with not only renters in the community through our efforts with the Community Services Agency, but we also have a multilingual outreach program here in the city where we're trying to make sure that we are reaching residents where their first language is not English. So our Spanish-speaking community and our Chinese-speaking community and Russian-speaking community, and making sure that they are aware of the opportunities that are available to them. So our rent relief program from Mountain View, we have provided $2.6 million towards this effort. And as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, right now, CSA has been able to reach out to at least, or attempt to reach out to at least more than 2,000 or so of people who have wanted to get help from this program. And some of those have not resulted in checks yet because they haven't been able to reach them. But there are active opportunities for this. And so in terms of our program and what we've done, at the time we did it, it was the largest program that was ever done in the Bay Area. And that includes even cities that are larger than us in Mountain View. And since then, there are a number of other cities that have also created programs. But this has been a big, big priority for us. And part of that means that when these rents are given, it means that the landlords are being paid. And those checks are going directly to the landlord. Then the second part of that is, we also created a $100,000 small landlord assistance fund, where small landlords that have less than nine units could apply for assistance if they have needs for capital projects or rent relief. And that project, or excuse me, that program has been open since the beginning of May. And we have received several inquiries to that. And as of this date, none of those inquiries have actually resulted in anyone applying for that program. So we are doing what we can to reach out to the landlords and make sure they're aware. And also through a lot of efforts through our multilingual outreach program. And then I'll let RT talk about perhaps what our housing staff is doing to work with those landlords and make sure they know about the rules and what our program is here in Mountain View.
Thank you, Kimbra, RT Shabastava. I'm the Community Development Director. Our housing staff and the staff that staffs the CSFRA program, which is our rental program in the city, is very much in touch with not just tenants, but also landlords. And they are reaching out every day to people to let them know what their rights are. And it isn't just about rent relief. We get questions of all kinds. And really, our staff is trained to connect them to us. If a small landlord, for example, can't qualify, we reach out to the tenants to see if they can qualify for rent relief. So we're trying to help them in any way we can. So we're trying to supplement everything that the Community Services Agency is doing with our staff efforts. I hope I've answered the question, happy to provide information on anything else.
Thank you, RT and Kimbra. We have about twenty, a little bit less than twenty minutes left. We have seventy odd questions here, plus the additional questions that were sent in beforehand. So really, thank you so much for your patience as you bear with us as we either clump together ones that have a theme or as we're looking to be able to get through many of these, as many of these as possible. So the next question is for, probably for both the mayor and the police chief. The question is in regards to kind of going forward with how we're making these efforts to address things from implicit bias, training, anti-police sentiment, racism. What are the actionable things that you guys can talk about right now going forward for plans to address either community involvement or having these discussions and making actionable change? So Chief, why don't you start and then we'll go to Mayor Abby Koga.
Thank you, thank you, mayor, for letting me go first. So we're in active discussions. The city manager and my office have been talking about some of the alternatives that might be most effective. Reaching out to faith-based groups, starting to have some community dialogue, how we might involve the folks that are really active and interested and wanting to address the topic. One of the first areas is our subcommittee through the Human Relations Commission and working with them to identify next steps and how that might go forward, as well as the subcommittee from the city councils. So we're also looking at an opportunity to put together a youth community academy, for lack of a better word, and presentations that might provide information, at least, not that you have to agree with us, but we're happy to share with you, you know, how we operate and why we operate. And then maybe from that, some great dialogue will come out with ideas that could potentially innovate the way in which we provide policing and public safety services. So most importantly, we're open and are willing to consider all avenues to hear you.
Thank you, Chief. Yes, and similarly, it's really about conversation and dialogue. And, you know, I really appreciate the comments that we've received. It's, you know, made me think about how we deliver our services and are there better ways to do it? You know, I think a big issue that has come up in the comments we've received is, you know, mental health services and how that's being provided. And is there an opportunity to, you know, look at how changing that and incorporating that into our, you know, first responder program? And I think that, you know, what I've realized was, when I first started, you know, there were a lot of conversations that were happening. I actually, you know, really enjoy working with young people because I started as a high school student in our Youth Advisory Commission in San Mateo. But over the years, and part of it was the budget cuts back in almost ten years ago during the Great Recession, some of those opportunities have been lost. And it's made me, you know, reflect on that and realize that, yeah, we haven't had those opportunities as much lately. And it's probably time to revive all of that. And that's what really, you know, this has been bringing forth in my mind. So that's my hope. And again, you know, I hope we can look at some of our programs, our, you know, services. A lot of what we do is in conjunction with other levels of government, particularly the county. You know, they are the providers of a lot of the social services and we partner with them. So I've started those, you know, discussions, reaching out to our county folks to see if there might be opportunity to, you know, partner and to look at how we can change things to better serve our community. So I hope that, you know, folks will continue to engage. Government, you know, here, government is slow. It often is, but and part of that is because we do want to be, you know, inclusive. And it's also very complex. And, you know, it's taken me many years to understand who does what and, you know, where does the funding come from and this and that. And so, you know, even with the budget, it's a, you know, six-month-long process to get our budget together. And I hope that, you know, folks will, if, you know, are interested, will continue and continue to engage and really, you know, help us in hearing from you, but also understand how, you know, things work so that we can have real productive conversations and formulate plans moving forward. So, you know, I really am committed to this. I'm actually frankly excited about the, you know, the discussions and the opportunities. Sort of, yeah, it's refreshing to have this. And I try to be positive and look at the, you know, the silver lining. And so I'm looking at this as a real, yeah, a real opportune moment. So I hope folks will continue to, you know, work with us and engage with us. Thanks.
Thank you, mayor. We did have a question from Karen come in with regards to infrastructure. And Karen asks, what is the status of infrastructure work, particularly the repaving of some of Mountain View's damaged streets?
Thank you, Katie. In terms of the status of infrastructure work, one of the things is, even when shelter in place occurred, we were still able to keep our engineering teams involved in all designing all of our capital projects. They were mostly just working from home. We did have to put our construction projects on hold for a while until May, when the county said all construction may resume. At that time, we were able to start resuming even paving our streets. We already had some in progress that we had to bring to a stop. So we are moving forward with that. I'll also note, since the concern is pavement, that thanks to an infusion of funding that the city is receiving and will be receiving for the next several years from BTAs, Measure B sales tax, as well as increased gas taxes from Senate Bill One that was passed a couple of years ago, we're looking at being able to invest nearly $28 million in pavement work over the next five years. And by doing so, we'll be able now to start to see an upward trend in the overall condition of pavement throughout the city. So over the next few years, we should be able to start seeing some real improvement.
Thank you, Don. This next question is for Chief. Chief Leslie wants to know, why do you do the work you do?
I ask myself that a lot these days. I think the question Leslie's asking is, why the police department does the work we do? Or as chief, but I'll take the police department. So one of the first responsibilities of local government is public safety. And like four in the morning this morning, we had officers respond out to an alarm call at a commercial business and caught a burglar inside. So that's, that's why we do the work we do, to protect the community and serve the public. So we get thousands of calls each year, varying from crimes in progress to disturbances, to parking problems, a wide array of issues that come our way. And if we're able to provide a solution, we're able to give assistance to a victim, direct services to somebody that may need it. That's the reason we're here. So that's why we're doing what we're doing.
Thank you, Chief. All right, we have about ten minutes left. So we're gonna answer a couple of more questions. And so the next one actually is for Kimbra. She, Kristen asks, CSA has helped me with one month of rent relief, which I appreciate. I was told that a second month would be possible. I added my name on the list three weeks ago. When I've spoken with them twice, they tell me they are 1,900 applications. There are, I'm sorry, there are 1,900 applications in front of me and they're swamped. How come the information from the city is completely different from what I'm experiencing?
Thanks, Katie. So I'm not certain that the information is different in the sense that there are over 2,000 applications right now and they are working through those. And I know that they have been working very hard to get through that volume of requests coming in. So right now, they are through the first month. And as she noted, what was the name of the resident?
Kristen.
Kristen. As Kristen noted, that she did receive the first month rent. And so CSA is working through the applications right now for the second month. So I would expect if she put a request in three, two or three weeks ago, that she will be hearing back. I just can't guarantee an exact date that that will happen. But I do know that CSA is working through those applications.
Thank you. Another question coming for you, Kimbra. I think this, I don't know if this is the name, Tenob. He's, this person says, I know the city adheres to the county health director, Dr. Sarah Cody. Is there anyone from the city of Mountain View that is asking questions, doing some sort of oversight on what is being recommended? I ask because for months, all we have heard was that we'll make decisions based on health and data. That is from the governor and from her. The way we opened up didn't appear to have much to do with health and data. I'm not complaining. But does the city know what models are being used at the county and at the state level? Do they include better nursing home management? And do they include the recent update from the WHO about asymptomatic carriers?
Okay, I'll try to remember all of that. I think just at a high level, the first part is, we are engaged with the county on a number of different levels. And that is everything from our mayor, who's involved in several different roundtable efforts, several task forces, to weekly calls that she has, that I have, that our other council members have with the county and the other elected officials from our county. So there is a lot of dialogue that's going on. But I think the root of the question is, you know, would we have any sway as a city and as to what decisions are made? And so I think the answer to that is, at its most foundational level, the public health officer has the full authority essentially to make these decisions for the county. But what the cities have done and continue to do is provide feedback to the county and to Dr. Cody in terms of what we're seeing in our cities or what we're hearing or questions that were being asked. For example, I think there are, there were a lot of questions about car parades. And there were some counties that were allowing car parades. And at some point in time, we were not allowing them in Santa Clara County. And there was a lot of information coming from our residents, not just in Mountain View, but in many other cities about that. And so that was something that we could tell the county that we were hearing and asking them if this is something that they might consider. In terms of the data, I think that was part of the question too. The data that is happening at the state and county level, that data is really not available to cities in the sense that the data that they're using corresponds to the number of people that are in hospitals. Of those people that are in hospitals, how many are in ICU? And also, how many people are testing positive? So how many people are getting tested in general and then how many are positive? And so at a city level, we don't have a public health department. None of, none of the cities in Santa Clara County do. So that data is really controlled at a different level than at the city level. And a lot of those involve HIPAA considerations. So we aren't able to affect the data or know the data in advance from that perspective. But we do get the data when it comes out. And obviously, they try and make the best decisions they can with data. But I think right now, it's like everything, things change on a daily basis. And so we do the best we can and try and work with the county. But it is an ongoing dialogue. We are constantly communicating with them and the other cities in our region. And mayor, I don't know if you would want to say something to that, but it is something that we are actively talking with them constantly.
Yeah, I would just add that we have asked for them to give us more advanced notice when they're about to change things. And they have committed to giving us like a, not necessarily certain dates, but some sense of, you know, when, what, when, what, when things might open up next. They have, you know, they have these five indicators that they're tracking and their decisions are based on that. Things like testing and contact tracers and hospital beds and so forth. So they, and that's all available. We have PowerPoints, the county has presented that at their county board of supervisors meetings. So that is available. But I think the challenge has been really like trying to, you know, know when things are gonna open. And we've been getting a couple of days' notice and then, you know, expected to open as a city or even our businesses. And it's, it takes time. It takes time to plan and to prep for those openings. And so we're hoping that we will get better information in that sense.
Fantastic, mayor, thank you so much. Fantastic, Mayor. Thank you so much. We are running up against 5:30. So Mayor and City Manager, any closing remarks that you would like to provide?
Thank you. I guess it's my turn to, to thank you now for, for going first. No, I, I just want to say thank you, everyone, for joining us in this town hall today. This is really an attempt to further the conversation that we have and just want to restate that we are committed to having this, this ongoing dialogue with the community in order for us to take action. So this is something, as I said, that will be happening over the next few weeks and months. And we look forward to having that conversation and, and listening and, and figuring out how we're gonna move forward. So I thank you all for joining us in this town hall and to the department heads for joining us as well. And to the police chief for giving an update. I, I just appreciate everyone's time on this Friday late, late afternoon. And thank you, Katie, too, for moderating. Appreciate it.
I just want to echo the thanks to our participants from the public and to all of our staff here. You know, we, I know there's many other questions and we will try to get responses. And, you know, some, I see multiple questions from individuals. And, you know, I'm happy to have one-on-one conversations with folks or if there are groups that want to, you know, meet and talk, we can try to do something via Zoom or hangups or I guess they're called meetups now. So I'm, you know, happy to chat more with folks and I hope that we can do that. You know, I am committed to trying to make things happen or making change. Again, I think I, I still need to hear, I think I need to learn from about some of these concepts. You know, some of the, the requests, I'd like to understand more what they really mean. So those are the, you know, conversations I hope to have with, with you. So yes, please feel free to reach out. I think, you know, depending on how sheltering in place goes or how much longer it goes, we may be doing this again. And so we will, you know, do our best to continue to reach out and be accessible to all of you. So thanks again for joining us on our Friday afternoon. I hope that you'll have a good weekend and maybe enjoy some of the downtown restaurants. They're starting to open up and we would, you know, really appreciate the support. So thank you again to everyone and have a great weekend. Take care.
Thanks, everyone. That concludes our webinar.